Good evening, welcome to today's session November fourteenth, twenty twenty-three. Donna, would you go call please?
It will. Councilmember Bod.
Here.
Councilmember Sherman.
Here.
Councilmember Gutierrez.
Here.
Marinesco.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Schmidt. Councilmember McDowell.
Here.
And Councilmember Peterson.
Here.
Thank you, Donna. Public Works Director Jay Harris has information for us about the transportation impact fee program.
Good evening, Mayor Jay Harris, Public Works Director. A few weeks ago at study session, I gave a presentation. There was some questions about traffic impact fees. And really going back to what are they, what do they do, how do we charge them, those sort of questions coming up. So I wanted to take a step back for a moment and go over some of these items. So my next slide, please. So traffic impact fees are one side, one time charge assessed by local government against the new development. And it pays for expanded or new capital facilities that addresses increased demand for services by the development. And so under the Growth Management Act, we collect traffic impact fees. We had that in ordinance, obviously we did, we adopted an ordinance for that. And public streets and roads are sort of the highlighted thing there. There's other things you could collect impact fees for. Schools, for example, they have a pretty low one here in Sheldon School. By understanding, we don't have anything for parks today. We don't have an impact fee for parks. It's something council would consider. We do have a transportation impact fees for roads though. So pretty much traffic impact fees take the cost for new transportation facilities. And they charge the development for those rather than charge like the channel five or the channel public in ways. So the new development and the growth of the new development is paying for the expanded roadway improvements needed for that development. The next slide.
Also tenant improvements would be it. You'd be charging traffic taxes for tenant improvement if they were adding space to their.
Potentially, yeah, absolutely, yeah. That's part of.
Is that in here?
Yeah, okay. Yeah, because it's a.
Okay, so here's some key principles, okay? It can only be used for capital facilities, so road facility and can be used for operations and maintenance. That's basic, that's for expansion, right? And that it can correct existing deficiencies in your system. But it can be used to expand facilities. So a lot of times if you have severe deficiencies by huge transportation backup. Like the TBD funds or state grant or other things are gonna have to go in with traffic impact fees. The traffic impact fees for the new development and for the capacity. So if you have an existing deficiency, I can't go and use traffic impact fees to solve that existing deficiency. This comes all out of state code, right? And I can't use a hundred percent of traffic impact fees for a project, right? So even though it might make sense where I gotta buy land, I gotta build a roundabout, it doesn't exist today. And it's all a hundred percent new traffic, this doesn't exist today. There's no road there, let's say. The state says I can't use a hundred percent, so I gotta put a dollar in for somewhere else or whatever. It gets me to a personal thing. So we're updating the existing facility, there's existing deficiencies. We use TBD or grant funds and then we supplement the project and I'll get to that in a minute, some of the ones we've done with traffic impact fees. So so the tip credits can be given to developments to build identified capital capacity projects. We're having conversations with developers, okay? We have people like Olympic Heights, for example, at the college, that intersection has backup right around school time, right? And so there's issues there with them trying to get the traffic out. They sort of hit a little logjam right there. So there's potential to take traffic impact fees that they would pay. And that they go build project, whatever is identified. And then when they pick up their building permit, we waive some of those traffic impact fees that they would have paid. And the good thing about that is if it's an identified improvement, it needs to be in our capital plan or comprehensive plan. That we're using private dollars to, and private engineering to build and construct things, you know, for the future of the city. Typically, they add more capacity than what their need would be to. We pay them for additional capacity for others in the in the future. So we don't have to pay prevailing wage because it is private contract work, right? So there's a lot of benefits to the city. The city, I'm loaded with projects right now, right? We have a lot going on for the small staff I have. So it does take the weight off of some of the things we need to do and puts it on private developers. So this is the new one as of July, the second whole one from the bottom. Then they can be used for bicycle and pit facilities. You gotta connect two or more destinations. Obviously, you gotta go from here to there, but that was in there, but that's a new one that they put in there. And it was, that can make a difference in the future. So we're working on our transportation component of our plan next year. And so we have the transportation plan, which is the car part of it. And then we'll have the multimodal sidewalk and that part of the plan also. We're gonna identify projects, the Simpson Trail can be one of them. That potentially could use traffic impact fees to find a piece of that project, right? So they'll be good in the future, maybe used for some more pedestrian type of projects around the community, especially to start connecting things up a little more, right?
Why, why can't you use a hundred percent of the cost of the project?
Yeah, RCW, you fix that for us? I didn't. And so I'd have to go back and look at the website notes, but I think they're just saying that you never do a full capacity improvement. And I brought up that one where there's no road existing and I gotta build a signal and a new road, nobody's there today. RCW says that you can't bill it a hundred percent towards new development or impact fees. So it's this provision that they have. I think they want almost a city dollars in projects. Whether, you know, it's gas tax funds or TBD or maybe a grant where we use TIF funds and go secure grant for some things. They just wanna see that next money.
Wanna see the city a little more responsible instead of.
And we should plan projects and have some buyout.
Okay. Well, and not just the people living in that home and are going to use that road or their roundabout, right? So that makes sense.
It should pick up some existing deficiencies somewhere else.
Yeah, and this, and I can see where this, I can kind of understand maybe where the language, why the language is specific like that, because then you can run into the problem where developments pay for a specific improvement.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You know, like, and that's not the case. I just remember we, when school bond passed and we were about their TIF at the high school. It was, you know, you guys are gonna make us build a roundabout, you know, it's like, no, that it's the impacted system. But you keep saying traffic, transportation, not just traffic.
So what I said, unfortunately, is Oregon.
Yeah.
Use, use traffic at that ease. And then unfortunately, in our municipal code, we call it traffic at that office too. So I was programmed, but in the new orders I'll be bringing you, I'm going to transportation. I gotta change this library.
All this.
But it is traffic.
Rewire, okay?
But it's more.
It's more of the.
I considered bike.
Yeah, in a meeting I had referrals. Okay, so then there also can be some G reductions or waivers, okay? So if you find that the impact caused by the development doesn't place a burden on the system. So there's findings that this particular use does not need more traffic, right? And so those are a little hard to determine, right? I guess example could be maybe a helipad, right? Where you're going up and down, right? You don't use. But then you can make a finding, well, people leaving, need to pull their car in there, right? To maybe leave that all that. So things like that, but there are instances of people that might not pay an impact fee for a type of development or that being used.
That's like a reduction, right? Rather than definitely a waiver.
It's very hard to find some, a use that does not generate any traffic. So there's also RCW allows impact waivers or accurate reduction for low income housing, early learning facilities. Or developments with broad public purpose. And then those items, if you waive a piece of that fee, somebody else has to make it up, okay? So in the City General Fund or a grant or whatever, you still need to have whatever the fee charged, the fund still needs to go. You know, the traffic impact fees all, you can waive it, but another fund, the City General Fund would need to contribute whatever the partial cost was. So I guess like this, if you had a reduction for low income, for example, you might have some low income sales tax or some traffic or some revenue source. That helps offset some of those traffic impact fees.
So that's a viewpoint.
That's great.
Yes.
Yeah, offsetting that from someplace.
And I did, this is written RCW, okay? So next slide.
I have a question in mind. I don't know if we're in the right area or if we're ever even in the area. So they're in the urban growth. And they're building a house, there's no road, there's, there's no traffic impact fee, obviously, because it's, it's urban growth. And then we annex into the city, then nothing?
We, we accept, we accept the current conditions essentially.
So.
Go ahead, are you done?
We.
No, I'm just. It's rolling in my head, go ahead.
So my question for the low income housing, early learning facilities, developments. Okay, so maybe it's built for that and then later down the road, it changes use, what happens?
Yeah, I'll get to that in a few minutes. Good question. And going back to.
Yeah, so going, I stole my head, so I'm going back. So we annex this area, there's no road, then we're required to put it in at the taxpayers' dollars.
We're still getting behind.
Or a substandard road, maybe it's a gravel road. I don't know, provided to five, six, seven houses, something like that. So it's a substandard road to the city that occurs. And then now that's added to our CIP later down the road for improvements.
So when a bunch of people fell in the county on septic or whatever within our UGA, we're not charging traffic impact fees. We charge for sewer connection charge later and a water connection charge and they, they would pay a ton of facility charges. But the building's already built, right? So we don't charge a traffic impact fee. The county doesn't have a traffic impact fee either. So one of the things.
Need help there?
Oh, no, they might, they don't, they don't care in our UGA. One of the things we're talking about, we're going through this big planning effort with them at the same time that we're doing it in a certain point in Asia, I think. Is that within the UGA that they apply a traffic impact fee equal with the amount that we would charge, right? And then that money's collected and put into a fund to identify improvements within the UGA and within the city limits.
More specifically, adopt development standards, city development standards within the UGA is part of the conversation with the comprehensive plan.
Sewer, water, streets.
Yeah.
Local roads, street life, so.
So.
Making progress on that? It hasn't started yet, actually, yeah, but that.
Just in years.
That's the top.
Years past.
Correct. Yeah, yeah. Well, it obviously will start on a staff level, it has to be.
So a little more on Eric's comment. So you've got a, you build a house out of the UGA and the roads are dirt and everything, so you leave it. But then they're annexed into the city limits. Is there a charge? No. It would be the future houses or the future businesses.
Yeah, so if there's an empty lot next to that house is annexed, they construct it now within the city limits. They would be subject to the city's fees and, you know, and development standards, correct?
All right.
So that, that's one of the ways to do it. Another way UGA development can happen is you have to annex to the city in the UGA if you want to develop. And you have to hook the water to sewer, right? That's very common in a lot of other cities. So there's different ways to do that. The problem is with that is you don't get, we have the product development, we're all over the place. Could development go linear then? Because you have to extend logical services, you know, that are cost effective. So you sort of build your way out of the UGA to that degree. People sort of annex as, as super modern facilities are extended. So that's another model. But you can't go to the far corner of the UGA and put a septic system in, which is allowed now and potentially play well, right? We get a better one. So anyways, things are a little different here. So traffic impact fees. So how much, was there any final questions on that last slide? So I noticed a tip calculated. So is a per vehicle trip generated during the peak hours? And it's determined by the use of the property. And then they use trip generation data from the Institute of Traffic Engineers. It's a national type of model. And the rates are adopted each year, a per place, and they're in the master plan schedule, which you guys saw in the last meeting. So the traffic impact fee for residential housing is a flat rate per unit regardless of the size of a home. So if you have a thousand foot single family or four thousand square foot that, a single family, the TIF is sort of averaged out for all single family. Because most communities have differing types of housing and the impacts from all of the users for a single family equal about the same. But there's another one for commercial fees, and I'll show you those in a minute. And that's per across a floor area. Apartments are numbered in this. Gas stations are by the number of vehicle fueling positions. This is what they call it in the ITE. It's the number of pumps, right? And then anyways, I have the table on the next page. And then these are just footnotes that you have on the table that sort of guides you how, what some of the acronyms are and that sort of thing. Anyways, next page.
Jay, is that, is that number, the way that the fueling pumps are placed, does that have a big impact on how the traffic is, how it comes? Is that what that is?
Yes, more pumps, more traffic.
Yeah, but if you put them, does it matter which way you put the pump, but they?
Typically, they build so you can always access some, right? When you're designing a station. So there should be an issue there with that. And then also, you might have a lot of pumps but not sell a lot of gas for various reasons. The mayor probably knows why, usually it's the price, it's on a sign and people don't like it, they keep driving by. But it could be level service, how the station looks, those sorts of things. So with the traffic impact fee, so natural average based on pumps and trip generation, on average, what a station would generate. But like Frank Meyer, if you go, right, probably per pump generates more traffic than, and Harville probably also isn't that same. Than a Chevron, you know, right downtown or something that maybe has their core type of station. They typically don't generate as much traffic as some more of the wholesale gas stations, but the fee per month is a national average. It's all the same.
It's only, but that'd only be for like a new, a new build.
It'd be a new build, if you wanted to add.
Change of view.
Yeah, we had an individual several years ago that talked about adding pumps to the stage that would have generated additional TIF.
Tenant improvement.
Yeah. You got it?
Can you remind me, do we have parking minimums for commercial?
Uh, yes, in some.
In some zones?
Yeah, not in downtown, but CIV, general commercial.
Really, really, what's the point of that? Minimums?
Question.
Sorry, okay, no problem.
Yeah, it's gonna be addressed as well, yeah.
Just.
Yeah.
So here is traffic impact fee schedule. You see a single family residential, forty-seven hundred dollars per day due to the limit. Okay, multi-family is twenty-eight hundred. And you go down the residential uses, you see all those. Some of the commercial services, hotel per room is an ITE code three-ten. And they are at twenty-seven hundred. And there's been talking hotels, right? And in somewhere needed in this area. Nothing is quite keen to provision today, but there's, this didn't, that didn't really happen, right?
Do you have any idea why it's so high for hotel for a room?
That's the actual trip generation per room based on the number of units. So you can see if you go all the way to the top, the basic trip rate is about one. A single family home is about almost ten trips per day per house. That's you, your kids, that's the Amazon truck, that's the mail, that's the meter reader. You add all the uses of, and some were pass by trips, right? And some were direct trips in and out. But so they take a basic trip of one, so you can see that the hotel, they're saying is about sixty percent of a residential unit. What seems about right when someone pulls in?
No one visits seniors though, so I mean, it's seniors don't live in is like point one one.
Right, very low because most people don't drive, right?
So the calculation is the cost of new trip generation, see if that forty-six, five, what is it, fifty-four, fifty-seven? And that's multiplied by the, the trip rate. If you see new trip rate in the second last column to the, to the right. So you'll just multiply. So if it was a one, it's a forty-six, fifty-four, fifty-seven. Again, if it's whatever, one point oh one, one point oh one, that's why it's forty-seven oh one eleven. So that's how it's calculated.
Hotel motel in Olympia is three thousand eight hundred and two dollars per.
So any questions about the TIF schedule?
This is the first time I've actually seen an impact schedule.
And this is also a master, master plan schedule.
Part of master.
Part of master.
Yeah.
Attachment.
You get a really good restaurant. I'm really surprised at the amount for a restaurant compared to a hotel room.
Yeah, now of the restaurants you wanna watch, is it a sit-down restaurant? Or is it a higher turnover, fast food, we try a tavern, drinking place, that's always a good place to go. Anyways, you can see the different categories. And when you go to the Institute of Traffic Engineers manuals, they have a whole page describing exactly what that type of use is. And how they calculated the numbers and, you know, how they came up with averages.
So I, I, I'm not sure I'm understanding some of these. So supermarket, thirty-one fourteen. Where does per person, per square foot?
Yes, for a thousand, a square feet of gross area or.
Okay. I'm going over the other side and going, oh wow, thirty-seven thousand dollars for a gas station.
So those commercials are based on the square footage.
Okay.
Rather than the, the.
Flat rate.
So and on, on the next page, I got a calculation, it's still something, do one of these from that table, next page. So a new restaurant, hey, that's fun. So you multiply this, the square footage by the traffic impact fee that's shown on the far right column, that corresponds whatever it is to type one. So a new fifteen hundred square foot quality restaurant, we pay a one time traffic impact fee of the fifteen hundred square feet. By the twenty-seven eighty-eight show on the table and forty-one thousand dollar traffic impact fee for the new restaurant. So that pays for their new trips or adding to the system over the life of that restaurant or that structure, right? And so they can always change use, right? So down the road, if the restaurant goes out of business, they could change use if it's a reduced use. There's no credits back, but if they increase the use from the restaurant, then a charge would, that's higher, a higher trip generation than the commercial restaurant. We would charge an additional fee. So that one time fee sort of runs with the property or, or the improvement. So change of views. So we need to look to see if it generates more or less vehicle trips. If it's more trips, we charge a fee. If it's less, we just use the old fee that was previously charged. So the supermarket submits a retro remodel, a six thousand square foot auto parts store. It's something plausible here. Water and auto parts store in the supermarket wants to go in. So the TIF for the supermarket, without the offset, without the auto parts store, they build a brand new one, it'd be a hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars for six thousand square foot supermarket. And the auto parts store would be ninety-five thousand dollars if they built, or you subtract the two. And so the supermarket, because of an increased trip rate, would owe ninety-one thousand dollars. These fees are charged by all surrounding cities, right? This isn't anything unusual. Ever see some stock on people's face, see their big numbers, but to be honest with you. Our numbers are somewhat tame compared to others, okay? So anyways, I'm used to where I came from, these numbers were quite a bit higher and a lot of different.
Well, that must not be fussing with them because they're, they've got building and new building and everything going up in Olympia.
Yep.
So the fees, they must just figure that's what it is.
That's what it is, that they use those for capacity projects.
It's different economy.
Yeah.
I mean, an entry level home, there's twice what an entry level home is here. And it's.
I'm thinking of all the, the condos downtown.
Yeah, but it's just, I mean, it's, it's, it's just a different economy of scales, you know? Like running some of these numbers. And both small restaurants will never be able to.
They could potentially make their money back over there a little faster than we can.
Unfortunately, our transportation costs are the same.
Right, yeah.
Because per, per mile lane here is the same cost as Olympia to construct. Yet, yeah, these businesses aren't realizing potentially the same return on their investment.
And the other thing, these fees were calculated quite a time ago, this is like two thousand eighteen fees, how we've increased a couple times in just a few years inflation before I got here. Did this inflation adjustment. But when we give them the new transportation comp plan, come up with a new year, maybe something like that. We're gonna have a brand new project list, we're gonna have project evaluations, we're gonna have on there PMP points. New trips, existing trips, what's different than by the total project. Come up with that new base TIF fee for constant speed.
Who's keeping track of these change of uses? Because I could tell you probably on railroad, we probably had one building with ten change of uses over the years. I mean, as a guest.
So a change use can go from mercantile to mercantile. If you're, you know, if you're a bookstore to a candy store, it's not gonna be technically.
Bookstore to a restaurant, restaurant to gift shop, you know, restaurant to a gift shop.
If they're permitting, so, right? If you apply for a business license or apply for a building permit, then you get, you get notified and there's a change of use. Application required and every review that changes you to application determine what could, what moves will be allocated or what.
And we try to bring those up at pre-submission conference, so I highly recommend anybody doing any tenant improvements or anything, come in and talk to the city. And have a conference with us, so you know before you sign a lease or anything, what the fee would be. Because you could walk into a form of business where there really isn't any fee because it was a higher trip generator. Or you could buy something that has been vacant for an extended period of time. The TIF code has a five year limit on it. So if it's vacant for five years, right? The fee really, it goes back, you'd be with whatever your approval, what it's, you would have to redo it. That's the current TIF ordinance. Yep. So that's why it's prudent that, and we phone people, come in and talk to us about each use, each address, right? Because they all vary a little bit. Especially on the commercial side. Single family residential is just that flat fee no matter the size of the building. But it's important to come talk to us.
Okay, so just wanna go start changing restaurant leases downtown, get TIF rich. I'll have a hundred thousand dollars in equity in each building just off the fees they want to pay.
Are there any land uses that we don't have identified here that exist in the city limits? Essentially, it's really. Anything that is not subjected to TIF? Other than the elementary school had a penny in there, that should probably have a number.
Okay, what was the number that you told me?
The elementary school does fly.
Well, I know they're gonna get any TIF from the background.
Because, because it's simply life for life, right? Because they.
They haven't taken down the old mound.
They didn't take down the old mound.
They're using it for.
They committed to use it for office purposes or storage, is my understanding.
Okay.
Um.
Yeah, and as those, as those change over time in the valid permit process?
Yeah.
Yeah, they're very likely.
Okay, so where does? What's the number that you told me there that they're called? The five oh?
Five one C threes, the nonprofits or, oh, no, five oh twos.
Yeah, throw those in here. Thank you. Where are those in here?
So those would probably fall under either warehousing.
Okay.
Just they've argued that it depends on the building permit, right? So sometimes either a processing unit, so if I fall, excuse me, what would be some of, some of?
So when you go to the actual ITE manual, it says what all the similar uses and to that category is.
It's almost called or.
Warehouse.
Right.
Right, well. What they're doing inside the building.
Right, well, some of them might be a convenience type store, would that fall maybe? They definitely bring traffic.
Uh where would S, where like a the bill? That's what I'm saying, like, we actually identify all of the uses because.
But there's, like Jay said, the the manual has more specific. Uh definitions to the titles.
These are the most common ones, the IT land use codes, there's some others that aren't shown here, the table would be quite a bit longer without these. So whoever produced this table, um it it's a little abbreviated, you see longer tables with other cities. But the goodness is, is if it's not on here, you can go to the IT manual, it'll tell you what the trip code is. Um one thing I didn't explain to you also is, you have new trips called on there. And especially even down to commercial services, there's a bypass rate down there, some at fifty seven percent, sixty percent, something. What that means is if I'm going to a daycare center, I'm likely driving by the bank right after that. And then maybe going with the quick move or something, trying to get my car done, so they add those up as a whole trip sometimes. Uses two different uses or one trip, so that's called the pass by rate, and so the new trip rate was reduced. Each unit you can see has a trip generation, but you reduce it because the trips are already out on the road. Doing other errands, stopping by other places, so that's an important concept that the ITU uh put in their manual some years ago.
Glad they have a video rental store.
Really glad that they have that.
Fine thought.
So. This is just within the city limits, if you just go outside the city limits, you don't have to pay anything.
The county though does have a road.
Their their general property tax, they take the cost with the road.
Right, I'm just looking at, if I'm a developer coming to this area, I wanna open in a business, do I wanna be here or do I wanna be over there?
High high impact development's not happening in the county, so, you know, again, if you're looking to build new, redevelop. Um you know, in in dense, in higher density and in higher impact areas, it's not, it's not.
Why did you say that the county doesn't have traffic impact?
They haven't adopted the traffic impact fees, uh they have, they have a general road fund, general property. County residents pay uh their general property tax, they support road funds, they support capacity projects.
So essentially all the county residents are paying for that impact, as opposed for, as opposed to the impact, paying for the impact. And I don't know how people always feel about that, we don't, we don't, out of our property taxes, pay for transportation, so that's why.
Hey guys, break through slide seven. So here's our current adopted uh the traffic impact project list, transportation impact fee probably the worst. Anyways, uh so here's the list of projects, one of the goals here is uh, these are all capacity projects. Um we're uh going to update this, there's things that need to be shown on there. We're gonna be working on getting you guys a a more current update uh to the list, um cause some of the projects are being completed. Um and uh anyways, there's other, a few others that need to be added, that sort of thing. So uh staff could be getting you this updated list, it needs to be adopted by ordinance, uh so when we bring traffic impact fee ordinance to you. There's changes, I'll go with those amendments on another slide, we're gonna bring in an updated list to talk about the projects also. Any questions about projects?
We have plenty in queue, so. We're not gonna be, we're not gonna have too much money.
Then we're really concentrating on water, you'll see some street projects still coming out. But we need to make sure that water capacity is online versus road, that's one of our bigger roles. So uh on slide eight, you'll see the traffic impact key comparison, you can see the red arrow there. Um of where Hilton is, that number is a little lower, um this is twenty twenty three. Slide that you saw was suggested for twenty twenty four, um that's your current packet for the next meeting. So uh North End is the high price leader, about at all, but there are fifteen thousand two hundred something. And then um anyways, you go all the way down, so you see the average is at fifty five, three, six, two down at the bottom there. And then we're below average on the traffic impact fees.
We're in the ballpark, though.
We're ballpark, we're almost average.
Do they take into consideration per capita or?
But that, no, these are cities big and small. I mean, it's just a list of cities right on air.
Just some of the businesses that are gonna come into a smaller town are gonna be different than the businesses that are coming into a bigger town.
That's correct. And then some of the cities are built out, you know, if you're at any boundary and you can't build it more, you're gonna get back. So the theoretically, if we had a containment, if it was always stable in that boundary. Would go down significantly over the years, because once everything was built, you wouldn't be to do that anymore. Stone is a long ways off from that, okay, but uh a lot of uh, oh, like Seattle cities and that sort of thing. They're surrounded by other cities, they're built around, traffic impact fees plummet significantly at that point.
One thing, you know, it's interesting, uh Kitsap County, Therson County.
I have a question here. So let's say um we've got the city and we have the county that wants to build a building. Are they exempt to traffic impact fees?
Churches are.
So we're.
Unless they're in the county and not, if they're in the UGA, they would not pay, they're in the city limits, if you generate trips, you pay a fee.
So how, where on this list would they be? I mean, just they're not on here, but does. Okay, I see, okay. All right, answered my question.
Well, I just wanted to make a comment real quick, um first of all, I'm for. Changing the name to transportation, and I'm also, secondly, like, I think we should be about average or we aspire to be pulse bow or. Port Orchard, like other communities that are on the South Peaches Sound or Peaches Sound, we should probably get our rates up to where they are around twenty percent more. That's my first initial feedback.
Yeah, and so that rate in the next year, year and a half will be recalculated, and it is what the cost of these improvements are. Remember inflation at our, right, uh we've gone up since two thousand eighteen, twenty five percent. Eight percent, I can pick a number, but it is up there, right? And so the fee we're charging right now um is lower than it probably should be. And so um anyways, and then you look at all the projects on the list, ones that got done. Now remember, we've used grant funding that helped, like Western Gateway was one of them up there, and we got some grant funding for that. Which is we complete projects, and if we can get people to assist us with the projects by these state funds. Um theoretically, over time, your traffic impact fee should stay pretty stable. You know, that you can use traffic impact fees, some TBD dollars and some state dollars. And sort of run the projects off of different funding paths.
So we're not talking tonight for looking for any direction for raising any fees?
There is no fee other than in your council packet, Masterpiece Schedule, there's an inflation adjustment. This party adopted by ordinance, um the 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 CPI for that. And so uh that's the only thing, he went up over it for inflation, but we're not changing the fee or re adopting the fee.
Not the method is.
Not, not the methodology, just the amount went up by inflation. So uh past projects, uh Laurel Street, uh Thursday in the moral, that was way before my time here. Um there's a bunch of projects that were constructed about the same time. Um that included Laurel Inn and Lake Boulevard, uh some of those were all together in the same time that epic. Uh the next big one was uh Downtown Connector, a construction and design, these traffic impact fees. Uh those were capacity creating projects, you know, they added quite a bit of the whole error. Um and then Western Gateway, we use traffic impact fees on that, uh to offset some of our matches to the state. And so we currently have about seven hundred thousand in the in the traffic, in transportation impact fee fund.
And they have to be spent in ten years of collection, correct?
And uh right now, last end, we're about twenty three uh spending that, so. Latest one end, so we're still okay, um the the ten year.
Otherwise, we have to refund. Good, good feedback too.
Dollar has less purchase. You don't wanna sit on it.
So um so transportation impact fee municipal code changes, that I'd like to bring you folks. Um go to transportation impact fees, right, the word traffic, that matches RCW. Um our current municipal code calls on traffic impact fees, it's bad, it's.
Do we wanna go through these just one at a time, like a census, for the, for these suggestions?
You'll have, you'll have an opportunity to vote on those if you, yeah, at a later date.
Well, he's got suggested code changes, so. It's coming, it's coming back. So, so, okay, so changing the name are, we have a census to change the name to the traffic impact fees.
At least to bring it to council.
Correct, yeah, sorry. Make sure that we're. We're cleared, okay.
And and then the next one was um that, the project list is a little old quickly. If I have to adopt it by ordinance, keep bringing it back, bring, keep it back, I'm working with city attorney to see if we can, in the yearly tip. It's transportation impact, uh Transportation Improvement Program in the state, I gotta handle the projects every year, and those are all capacity projects. Um cause they're on state roadways that are, and they're identified as capacity projects. I'm gonna work with the city attorney to see if when that's adopted, if that list would be similar. To adopting, cause I don't wanna have to do ten M, the Transportation Impact Fee ordinance. They're two very similar maps, if you don't, but being, so um I'm gonna speak to them a little more about trying to make that a little clean or clear cut for you guys. Okay, so um anyways, more to come on that from the city attorney, okay? Um and then uh credits, so if a developer constructs an eligible capacity project. Um that's adopted within the uh that's in the adopted plan, um then we can negotiate credits back to them. So they don't pay full transportation impact fees. Um and um I spoke to our city attorney about that, and it's likely we're gonna have all those go to council through an development agreement. That way, you got them, staff doesn't have credit methodology and a manual that we would use, most bigger cities do that. We're not gonna have a ton of these, I think it's important for you guys to see when we're giving credits to a project, cause they're constructing. A capacity project that is front center, it's on the list, everyone knows about it, we know they're gonna be building it. And they're gonna be giving some credits to that.
Level change there.
So very transparent.
So, okay, so Olympic Heights, the first phase is two hundred homes, hundred and nine homes, so that developer is gonna put the intersection improvements. Or the road all the way down to the intersection there, so then he pays those impact fees or he gets a credit for those impact fees. And then the other five hundred homes come in with a different, different developer, how, what's going on there? Is he, and he again is paying those same impact fees for the, or it doesn't have to be used for that purpose.
That's correct.
Okay, so.
Capacity improvements, so.
Because the first guy for the two hundred homes is probably gonna do most of the improvements for that intersection.
Potentially, if they're gonna make any improvements in the intersection, they're gonna do it to full build out. Because they're not gonna come in and and do it, say, signalize it and then have to round about two years later when they build out more house. So they, they're gonna build that, and they build it to the, to the future capacity, so they could get credits at that point, right? To any other future capacity, not, not just their development, but any, any future capacity for any other development in the surrounding area. That's where the.
Cause I was assuming that it's not gonna be the same developer back there. Because it's, I don't think I sold all the partial, partials yet, unless I've recently sold them.
Um I, well, I, yeah, I don't know, I don't know who the home builder is, but it it very well could be the same home builder. Um that's, that's quite often how it is, the developer, the land, the land developer is different than the home builder, and so they'll sell off. The lots themselves for.
So regardless of the first improvements, the next group is gonna be paying the same fees.
Do park districts have the opportunity to have a transportation impact fee?
If not transportation, it'd be a park impact.
It it's, it's calculated the same way on, on increased capacity, so if you have. Whatever it is, an apartment, a single family residence, um typically it's not um commercial development, because. It doesn't have, you know, impacted parks, but if you're a single family house, it is two point nine six, or whatever census is. Um you take a CIP, your capital improvement program, and say, this over local lifespan or whatever the. Belt out of the city and that, that um the population growth will determine, you know, what parks are needed, what the cost is to build those parks. That'll determine how much each residential essentially pays for.
My question was because we can use this for parks, but none of the items on the list were parks.
Oh, we can't use this. To clarify, you can, you can adopt a separate park impact fee. Fire, fire protection fee, yeah, but the transportation type fee is solely for transportation. Sorry, we're just giving examples of what other fees could be applied, you might be more familiar with like uh our general facility charges, which are really close to. Same as an impact fee for sewer and water services, storm services, those are in place as well.
So on the list here, um the types of improvements that are eligible credits towards traffic impact fees, typically those are signals. Roundabouts, uh paving, curves, sidewalks for people to walk on. Uh some things that uh some people don't consider, it's all by agencies, sometimes they don't consider uh drainage facilities. Sometimes they don't put in street lighting, right? And I like fully improved roadways, right, and if we're requiring those type of things in our standards, they probably should be eligible. So our city attorney and I are looking at that, uh land cost is eligible, so we have to buy right away. RCW specifically states that, that um we have to pay people for, for property valuation. Like they have to dedicate a purchase right away, is one of the nuances in Washington. Um so be, uh I'm working with the city attorney on the list of things, there's likely most things are gonna be on there. You know, and we're not gonna probably admit much of that.
So you suggested that. In lieu of uh or credits would come to us in the.
Just for that. Credit agreement, when come to council ratification. Now, if that turns into a lot of busy work, where you see a lot of these, then we'll probably adopt additional credit methodology. Within the municipal code, and at least sets the easier ones for staff to process, right? But um oh, we, we wanna be transparent with these fees and and make sure everybody's involved. The, you know, the calculations and the methodology, uh the timeframe, a lot of cities, if you don't use those credits within five years. Be, because you just don't get all your houses built, cause you, you pay at the time of a building permit. Um there, and the last one here is you can defer to occupancy for residential, they uh. So uh anyways, but uh if you don't get all your houses built, uh usually this five year period. That uh that uh credit will go away, okay? So uh things like that will, it will be in that credit agreement for, for council to, you know, look at. And um adjust it.
Something to consider with that, I was watching um. A video of a developer who developed in Colorado in an area, built these big beautiful homes, amazing. Nobody can afford them. Nobody can afford them. The deferral wouldn't work for that cuz they've been sitting empty for two years, brand new homes, right?
You know, there's a sunset on that or not, I hope you're still. They they could still get the CFO, so the CFO doesn't mean that they've sold it, but it, you know, the builder's been issued the CFO, that's when. The uh the the TIF is is due in Washington state, not necessarily when somebody occupies it or is sold, it's when the certificate occupancy is is issued.
Okay, the certificate, oh.
That's an interesting here. Go back to your last question, are are you thinking about the article ramifications with uh?
Well, we've never, we've never executed a DA. As a council.
No, and I'm I'm not aware of one in my.
We're sitting on like some residential construction booms, you know, over the next ten fifteen years, right, stuff's gonna happen. Whatever, regardless of what we. Um and. I just see kind of your point with a larger development that may have multiple builders at some point. Then having to do the equitable thing across each, and then having to negotiate a DA across, you know, essentially five, six, seven, ten. You know, I'm just wondering how efficient that's to be.
Now, for traffic impact fees, I can give give you credit methodology if you want it in the municipal code. I've done it at various agencies, um we thought it'd be more transparent to bring those to you. But I can bring you the actual, you know, five year term, and they can transfer one development, the other development, there's just a whole list of items there. I can put it in the code and staffing process, the easier ones, the ones that are a little more difficult, we would leave in as another clause. That anything that doesn't meet this list could maybe go in, you know, as a development agreement if you choose. But we're we're telling we're making this to fit this body, right?
And I feel referred to something along those lines, just because I think when you look at transparency from the other side. As a builder, it's a lot more transparent of a process to say this is how it's ordered and not. We're negotiating and it might be different for builder A than it is for builder B, so I think if there's a set of standards and there's there's room within that to to make. Common sense solutions, you know, uh where do you find that middle ground? I guess it's kind of what I'm looking, I think you're right, there's certain things we should, it's actually a go down checklist if there's some fairly basic things, but if there's. A more involved process that you think needs to come to council, absolutely. Um what we don't wanna do is have a burdensome process for staff or for development community.
Certainly uncertainty for right, as much much as we can try to build. Right, this this tends to be kind of. What's what's the term though, it it it, you know, it it's a little wishy washy, I guess, it's a negotiation process, and what's the developer willing to take on themselves?
And sometimes it can benefit the city so much more not having the strategic guidelines where, hey, we really need this done, we can negotiate a better deal. I don't know, I like the negotiation aspect of it, cuz then we get to pick a little bit more of of what's going on as opposed to now, it's just gonna be a rigid thing that staff's confused. And we're just gonna get told what it is, so.
Well, that's usually though would be set by you in the for foreground right now.
Understood, but the projects are specific, our needs are different, so what if we, you know, what if we're not thinking far enough ahead with making these standards? As opposed to like, we've got that development coming in, if someone develops this all out, it expands the capacity, and then if the next person doesn't have the opportunity. To expand that capacity, then they're just paying fee, but then possibly they could shift it over to expand it to a different direction. I don't know, I I like the.
Well, realize it it's it's not gonna be a. A broad range of projects, right, if we're talking about Olympic Heights, it's not gonna be improvements on what the highway are, they're being considered. Right, so it it it's not this, it's not this menu of of the of the entire tip.
They're adjacent to.
They're they're adjacent to that, so it's gonna be a little more narrow, I think, than maybe we portrayed. Um through a a negotiation, if you will.
And do they have to be for? Any rules other than that's just like you're saying, or?
Oh, no, there's a host of rules, asking transportation compliance, capacity improvement.
Okay.
You know, um you're gonna need to submit a preliminary engineers estimate and a preliminary letter requesting so staff can process it.
I was specifically talking about the the location of. So it it has to affect their building site, or or we, or they can say, I wanna build your multimodal trail down here for some TIF fees. As opposed to building my road out because the road's built up.
That's where that's kind of what I was starting to think about.
That's what I'm asking, and there's a rule against that, cuz to me, I could come in and say, I wanna build a thousand homes. But the the roads are already in, or I already have to put them in, but if I can waive all these fees, then I can build two new parks for you, or we we there there are rules against that.
No, if it was in the comprehensive plan, then the transportation and and plan. Um you could pick a project very unusual, someone will pick a project over there. But if they felt it added value to their development, like the pedestrian trail thing that just came up, this whole time mobile thing just came up. I can maybe see someone saying, I need to extend the trail, but here there, I've already built this part of my development. But this offside trail is just connecting again, so usually there's a common theme that they connect, right?
And one. I think it's gonna be rare that the development we see in the next twenty years is is not gonna have capacity improvements required. Right, with our current structure, right? I mean, just just looking at the, looking at the condition on the ground today, but.
But there's there's also, just like you said, though, if if you're that back developer that developed those last two hundred homes. And everything's already done up to it for you, I I just, I don't know, that's just my place from it, and I see it, it leaves, it leaves it open for a lot more.
I mean, we're negotiating now already, I mean, we were negotiating with somebody to maybe put in their own water tank just to get some houses built, right? And now we might not need that, but so, I mean, we're already negotiating, it'll be stacked, so we're negotiating.
And just whereas like a developer can come in, I I mean, they can do things so much cheaper than what a city can do for often.
Absolutely.
Building out a trail over there, you guys have to do it at prevailing wage, it's gonna double what a normal person can do.
But if I have equipment and I have a guy who's ready to go, then. Yeah, yeah.
So it sounds like we. Kind of. Do you wanna see what that looks like, I guess, is that?
I I what is in there as it it's sectioned with different elements in it, and you give you guys, and. This is very typical, most cities have it in there.
So we're gonna give you, we're gonna give you guidelines for this negotiation power, is what we're gonna do.
Cool, I pretty, I know.
Correct? In advance.
Correct, we're gonna adopt that in the TIF ordinance coming up, we will set guidelines in there for staff to process. The majority of.
And we're gonna set the guideline, so.
You're gonna.
Sounds like.
And if and if there's a threshold that that makes more sense, that come back to council, we'll determine that threshold as a as a as a possibility, and you can review that.
Yeah, well, that that sounds, I mean, long as we're setting the guidelines for that negotiating power, then, yeah, that sounds fine.
Let's get some language in front of you, right, so you can see it, obviously this is conceptual, but you can get some language in front of you, you can see what it looks like. Digest it a little bit, make sense, we can adjust it from there, obviously, but.
Some cities have adopted a whole manual on this subject. Okay, I don't think we're beside it, we need that type of thing.
The DA requires three touch and it's a hearing. Yeah, I wanna learn more about that.
So.
Is is that okay before we move on, okay, we'll bring examples.
I like I like a session on just this methodology. And then I can do that rather than bringing the whole ordinance to you.
I think in the phone calls that we get when things about similar to this. How that would go.
So study session?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Be able to run through a couple of examples.
Actually, like four, five nods so far.
Yeah.
Seven, okay.
A couple of.
Seven, you're seven.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, cuz we have things coming up, whether they're in um the new tip ordinance or credit methodology. And if staff takes care of that on that end with the methodology we've all defined, or if it comes to you as a DA. You're gonna be hearing about it either way, later with the DA or right away with tip ordinance. So, but there's good thing, but the DA could be a repetitive thing, right, the development agreement. And so uh identifying those standards keeps an action from happening here. Um as the number of developments increase.
Interesting, cuz you know, those other phone call complaints, a lot of times are related to time. Yeah, and then three touch on a development agreements next for month. So, what do you want? I don't know, you know, I don't know what the advantage is or disadvantage at that point, if you're gonna go to try to negotiate out. The per thousand square foot, you know, or whatever, whatever.
There's also a small complexity with that, it's a DA, we come to you with preliminary costs and that sort of thing. The actual traffic impact fee credit or transportation impact fee credit. Um is based on actual construction costs at the end, right, it could be more, it could be less. You did, that's how the credits strategically issue is on actual cost at the end. So you take a DA, and then it takes a year more constructed, then you have actual final cost, the DA will speak to that. But it's still more complex. So a couple last bullet points here. Is uh so the deferral system, we wanna make sure that we meet state standards on that. Um that uh occupancy for residential, all that, we're doing some checking to make sure that's. The tra- uh transportation impact fee section hasn't been touched in a long time, so we're doing some checking in there. And then the last one is infill lots, so enter the traffic and transfers, it's called traffic impact fee right now. Section um that we're going to um. Remove the definition of infill lots, the infill lots was those little small hundred fifty foot or less. Improvements in the design centers, from that matrix we went through. Infill lots and the transportation impact fees are currently as written, is anything that was planted prior to nineteen thirty eight. Things here, okay, so there's two conflicting parts or standards that we wanna take care of that. And so uh currently infill lots do not pay a traffic impact fee in the current code. And I don't know if uh with the current RCW, if if that's even valid. They're generating trips, they say if you generate trips, you gotta pay the fee. Right, so um I'm checking with our city attorney on on that part also.
Yeah, he said, if you have four infill lots, there's there's a lot of traffic there. Or even three.
Just one answer, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, uh so that's all I have tonight, yes.
I'll I'll circle back, I need to finish formulating this.
No, not yet, okay.
You guys wanna jump in?
This is really, this this, I think these study sessions are. Priceless, because all the questions are in the back of our head and we don't think of them. You know, we just go about our business, but having them on paper and studying them is great.
So um just I'm gonna to sell here a moment, the three touch rules, a lot of agencies, they do a lot of study sessions. Back off on that, a lot of things go on the city calendar. Since you're, you're, we're sitting here talking about things, everyone understands. They put it on consent, you pull for consent, if you don't find something, if you wanna ask questions, but it does expedite your meetings. Study sessions, what it's all about, this is where you understand the materials that is presented to you. Uh some of these go on consent, um and uh if. If anybody even in the audience can pull from the consent calendar, it's normally had, they heard at the end, the business agenda, the action agenda, depending on what it's at. So I still get a whole presentation, so open to your consideration, but it does shorten the meetings.
Yeah, the county does that as well, but I I we should probably wait for the new uh council before we make those decisions, it's it's, you know, we've got.
I just open it thoroughly and 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 review any changes that are made at the same time, but um you know, I think that. At least portion, if not all, this council made the conscious decision that uphold the three touch rule.
Yeah.
Um for transparency purposes, I think we've we've instituted a kind of a different format for study sessions. Uh since then too, so if there's some, if there's a comfort level on on how much information you're receiving here, the direction. That's not forgetting as well, and if you need multiple study sessions to further that, in order to get it to. Um either a business or consent agenda or action agenda item later, um yeah, certainly open to discuss that. Whatever needs the the council's goals at the same time, um being transparent for our community.
I know for project awards, uh it's, we have a problem that we have to issue contract within forty five days. And um the current process, we're writing up against the window.
Well, we waive three touch when we need to.
We can't, yeah.
You can, right, but I just don't wanna get caught.
Waiting three touch on a DA. With yeah, that's not gonna apply. It's not gonna apply.
Why you talk about contact awards?
Yeah, but, yeah, I mean. Okay.
But but we want, we want council direction in that, because we don't want staff to be driving that, right? That's this is a good conscious decision of to institute, maintain three touch rule, and so staff wants to maintain that. At the council's discretion, and unless the council decides to change that, so. Uh but yeah, we can, we can bring that up for future consideration, we open up.
I think waving when we need to wave is fine.
It's always an option for us.
Right.
I like stopping when you need to stop, but.
Providing some guidance, well, and and maybe some criteria on like, what would, you know, what would. The um suitable um for.
I I'd rather um weigh in on the okay, side that's less. Or more transparent and less uh likely to be um controversial, so. I would mind, I would agree, council member Shannon.
Cuz there's been situations where we're like, okay, all the information there has been given to us and we need to move, and and we do.
And when we give it three touch rule, we three touch rule it.
But I I think Mark's saying that what criteria we want to allow a waiver with three touch, so. Grant awards, absolutely, we don't wanna lose a grant because it's gonna take a month and a half to do it the the three touch way. So we definitely wanna waive the three touch, but do we wanna waive a three touch for everything that happens? No, we don't, we. The criteria I I would say would.
Absolutely.
Round of words is definitely one of, is one of them, um I don't know what else can come up. You know, the, we we kinda waive a three touch for the arts pictures, which is.
Well, I'd rather waive the ball, and then if we feel that we need to go deep on something, we'll go deeper on it, but that's just the.
It's a future topic we can start to discuss in study session.
I was just thinking about the um infill lot definition and how that fits in with our five year. For, you know, to be after five years no longer applies, starting that formula over, how that fits in. Just trying to kind of right size that on process wise, but I think. The bigger picture was, you know, how do we align our definitions across the code, and that's absolutely what we wanna see, so.
I I guess I'll just leave it with this with the DA, I would hate to have four or three votes on DAs. And I see that happen. Because one side's gonna say, no, I'm not gonna subsidize this developer, you know, and the other side's gonna say, yeah, we need rooftops, right? And I think the importance of the transportation uh improvement plan also needs to get looked at too. Because, you know, you guys provide us with the plan, right, you know, you feed us that, we ratify it, there's usually really no challenge on that. Each each year. But we're structuring fees around that plan, and we can only execute that plan with these fees. So, I think we need to have probably a little more robust process for going through the TIP every year. Um keeping this in mind when we go through that, like bringing this back to us and saying, we add this project as a list. Overall, it's gonna, you know, increase total project list about this many million dollars or whatever, and. Tip should be commensurate with that or not, whatever you decide, but I think that will also, I don't know.
With the potential funding sources attached to these projects, correct?
Yeah, yeah.
Tip is attached for that, or if it's, or if it's the transportation district, and that's sunsetting in twenty twenty six. That has to be accounted for, correct?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, right, and. So it's in a way, it's like actually ten should almost be projected out.
We.
Six years.
I'm I'm a little concerned about this, these UGA issues, because should we have maybe a joint meeting with the counties and sit down and and talk about this? Because I could see people wanting to annex into the city, building their stuff in the UGA, why is still under county? Because I can see people wanting to annex into the city, building their stuff and the U G A Y is still under county control and then asking us to annex them and then we've got a dirt road. We have to pave. Or not, well, something says we have to. Well, I don't, we should have dirt roads in the city, but. I don't either. But I don't think we should be backdoored into doing one, I mean, we got enough out there right now that we need to.
I think we have the we have the appropriate um process set up with with the comprehensive plans being updated at the same time. We're gonna look through the countywide planning policies, the urban growth area, um development standards, um I think there's interest at least talking. Uh with county staff um to refine um those standards so they more appropriately align the city standards. At the same time, knowing that it's in the U G A and that in all all likelihood it's going to be nice in the city at some point, so. I think we have an appropriate process coming up, it's, you know, it's not quick, so it's gonna take some time.
So now I'm wide awake, any other questions? The items for the session? Nope, um all right, this meeting is or this study session is adjourned at seven eleven P M.